City Council, May October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah, may I just call them all, please? Council, Miesley?
Here.
Council, Betty Field, here. Council, King, here. Council, Rex, here. Mayor, Short, here. Council, Sovereign, here. And Council, Watson, here. We got it. Thank you. Council, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Yeah, I'll move forward here. Um, on the consent agenda, can I notice one, two, three, four? Four minor changes to the minutes that I could address later, but I was just mistalked. Okay. It's titles. Um.
Anything substantial the rest of the council might want to know about?
Mayor, I could.
Yes.
I just would like to say thank you to the city recorder for getting these minutes out quickly and efficiently. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And the deputies, they included the next day?
Are they?
Yes, they are.
Oh, well, then congratulations.
Since the last four times.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much, it's awesome. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
With the corrections that we have.
With the corrections that we have.
I'll leave that. I'll leave it.
Oh, it's been, it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion on the motion? All people say aye.
Aye.
Oh, any opposed? No, basically, good, all right, moving on here. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the, um, public hearing, uh, order of abatement, resolution. Five, four, nine, wait, move three. So, resolution ordering abatement of the city's rights of way at thirty-five Southeast Cook Avenue, Deepwater Bay, Oregon. Does everyone had a chance to raise the resolution? Is there a motion to accept the resolution as submitted?
Pardon me, Mayor.
Yes.
We want to open for a public hearing, so we want to open and take public comment on this request order of abatement.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Um, do you want me to get any background on the property? Okay. So, for the last, well, for a long time, but at least for the last ten years or more, but certainly within the last year I've been here, we've been trying to, after rumors, complaints from residents, um, Cook Avenue, to get one particular property cleaned up at thirty-five Cook Avenue. Last October, if the council recalls, you did a declaration of a public nuisance on that property, and you directed the homeowner to finish, to get the property cleaned up by the end of December. The, um, resident had asked for more time due to the weather, but the council declined to do that. However, obviously, nothing has happened since then because of various circumstances, but we're still having an issue, and the homeowner did clean up a good part of it, uh, but unfortunately, since then, the homeowner has brought back three to four vehicles, and Deputy Elstrom has helped with me with going in there and talking to the homeowner and attempting to see what they can do. They've also brought a couple of other folks from Lincoln County Sheriff's Office to attempt to have communications to get this done, so he can report on that, but where we're here right now is that we need, the council has expressed the desire to have that cleaned up. So, I spoke into our city attorney, and he said they could go and file a suit based on the code, but we would end up, you know, uh, in a place of having to pay attorney fees and go to court. He said our ordinance gives us this mechanism, which is to order the abatement, um, have a public works director, get a quote to abate it, get it, get it done, and then we would assess any fees on doing a lien on the property. The only concern that I have, not really a concern, but it is something else that we do have, as you might remember, a resident also on that property that does not have parking, a parking lot, parking driveway. Um, they have been spoken to, um, our public works supervisor, and I talked to them about what they can do. They're, uh, what, they're having, they were getting somebody in there, but everything's been delayed. So, they may come to the council and ask for some kind of consideration, um, with that, once we do this, because in order for our deputies to be able to enforce this, we have to enforce them all. So, when I wrote the resolution, I did address the particular property aspect of thirty-five Cook Avenue, but to make sure that they had teeth, if you will, I just called them along Cook Avenue, which are not, there's not supposed to be any parking there. Soon as the vehicles are renewed, um, the public works director is going to get those signs up to make sure, and then our deputy will enforce that. But the first step right now we have is to do the resolution, basically telling, um, us to move forward with getting it abated, and then putting a lien on property.
Any questions, Chris? Okay, I'm gonna open up the floor.
I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, um, you said you amended the ordinance, I mean, this, um, abatement, or what's the other part? How did you expand?
Oh, what, what, no, what I did was I made sure that it referenced, because we can't say, oh, you know, thirty-five, you have to get yours off there, but everybody else is allowing it.
There is that reference, please.
Yes, um. Um, on the second whereas, and the violations, uh, with the property and the city rights of way on Cook Avenue, I mean, I can clarify a little bit because I'm reading now, and seeing that maybe I could find you that a little bit more, um. And, uh, yeah, so we could probably. Looks like I could work that, revise that a bit more, just to make sure that there, it's acknowledged that those two issues can happen. Otherwise, um, LCSO won't be able to enforce anything. Maybe we add another whereas.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. And I'll work with our, uh, city attorneys to ensure that we're cracking that ten percent.
Okay, we'll open up the floor for public comments on, um, order of abatement, uh, resolution five, four, nine, and on three. This is a resolution ordering abatement of the city's rights of way at thirty-five Southeast Cook Avenue, Deepwater Bay.
Am I supposed to go up there?
If you are wanting to do public comments, yes, please.
I'm thirty-five Cook Avenue, I don't know what I want to do. So, I don't, am I, last time you gave?
You need to come forward and speak and identify yourself.
Okay, last time you gave me to sit up front. I'm rather new, and I'm thirty-five Cook Avenue.
And you understand what the city is, is?
Uh, I have no clue. There's an old picture of a good thing, and he sent me a letter, has the old picture. So, I know you want the stuff off the front of my house, move back, working on that.
And the street needs to be cleaned up also, all with the cars removed as well.
Okay, well, when everybody in the neighborhood moves there, I'll get right on that. How many have I moved?
I don't know.
You will.
Okay, can we give her a copy of the abatement, please, please?
And then, and number two, so somebody tell me what the abatement is.
An abatement means that the city is taking, um, legal action against the property in question at this point?
Oh, yeah.
To remove the.
To cure what's wrong with it, right?
Right.
And then, when you send the cops after me, it doesn't need to show up every day. When I have a time it has to be done, you don't need to make him come down and frustrate me all the time.
And when was the time that it was supposed to be done?
Well, no, I'm talking about the cars. Nobody's told me the other stuff anyway. I got all that stuff cleared up, then you showed up to give me a littering ticket. I'll show you what littering is, that's what everybody else does on that street. I was moving stuff, and you guys, you have, I work, I'm diabetic. I go to Eugene twice a week, every week, for a doctor.
Okay.
None of your business, and.
And you need to clean up.
Uh, yeah, and I need to get them, but I have one question I have.
All right.
Oh, you're right, right. Mario helps me when he can, but he works down there, and.
And we've been giving you lots of the away from last December.
Well, I get that, but now it's time to take action. Okay, well, the only thing you said last December was the cars.
Right.
And then, there's only two cars there. That silver car, that monkey pox boy came and threw a fit about, and I get my car.
Okay.
That belongs with Dale's. I have two cars there. I drive them both. They are licensed, tagged, titled, and insured.
And you need to put them into your driveway. Not in the.
What about the neighbors? How can they pick on me?
We're working on the, we are working on the neighbors as well.
Well, I didn't, I, you're not gonna pick on me while the neighbors get clapped on?
Right, we're working on all of that.
Mayor, can you talk to them?
We have one person at a time identified, and she's the owner of the property, so this is what we're gonna move in forward.
He helps as much as he can, and I do as much as I can. I have to work, I have to go to the doctor, and I don't plan anybody else's stuff.
And the time is up. Time is up, unfortunately, at this point. We've given you.
What, okay, then tell me what you need. How big is that? I know you want my cars moved, the neighbor's cars too. I really think I could get a lawyer and probably get through that for a minute, because you can't just pick on me.
We are working on all of that.
So, what I want to know is that you want cars moved, and you want stuff done on my side too now.
Right.
How far is that?
Right away?
From here till whatever, where you're using my property that I paid for, how much of my property do you want?
Ms. Newman, this map that you set is all white, it may show your other stuff, it shows the property line, and everything other side of this property line is the rights of way. So, even though the items, a lot of the items are not there, the problem line remains.
Okay, so what about the, I can't move these big things.
You're gonna have to. And if they're in the city's right of way, they're gonna have to be moved.
Okay, well, they can't be moved in a month, those are big trailers.
Okay.
So, this is a work in progress, and I, I've got this brown hands going with Mickey, but when you made me move all that other stuff, I had to get, I had to make room. I'm one person.
Right. And you've been given almost a year to do this.
And, and I work, and I know, we all work, but we need to get this taken care of, and the, um. Okay.
And that's what we're.
Give me some gasoline and a torch, I'll fix it for you.
Okay. This is not.
That, how long do you think, I can't move these in one damn week?
We're gonna be on and working with you, all right?
What does that mean, you'll pull them out, and I can empty them?
I don't know.
Right.
No.
And is it you driving by my house taking pictures in a white SUV looking thing?
I don't have a, I guess.
No, somebody is with hair that looks like yours, but I think that looks darker. But if it's not any of you guys, I'm posting it on social media, because that's just stalking.
Okay.
So, this red line, how far is that? Can anybody answer that?
What do you mean?
I just said, if here's your street, and this is my property, how many? How much of my property do you want?
Need to have a survey, do we have survey pins in your property, just lining up the survey?
How far is it? It's not different for everybody, is it four feet, ten feet, twelve feet?
It's a forty-foot street, um, so anything west of that is your property. So, if there's property pins in your front yard, you just have to locate them.
There's a pin that gets out in the street, it's a metal, it looks like a bullet.
Well, that, if you look at that, you can see almost exactly where the, your right of way is, or where your property lines.
If I look at the bullet in the street?
No, if you look at that sheet right there.
I can see that.
Right, well, look, it's.
Well, it doesn't say where is that. You want me to cut the fronts of these off? It doesn't say how far back from the street.
You need to, then you need to get a surveyor.
That's not something that we can determine for you, we show our right of way and order.
Listen, it is something you determine, you can't go to the forty and say, we're gonna take twelve feet of your property, then over here, take fifteen of mine, and there, there's gotta be a measurement.
Okay, we're gonna have public comment at this time.
Well, there's others that might want to speak.
Yes, yeah.
I, I. You can just say.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Well, if you help or, uh, I'd get some.
Yeah, I didn't hear yourself, please?
My name is Mario. Uh, so we've been working diligently, and obviously, everybody knows how it looked for a stage or so. I'm just a friend, and she actually pays me to help her. And I know emotions get high in these things, and sorry about that, but, uh, if you would have seen it a year ago, what was your, like, five vans, cars, full of stuff? Which is no fault to anybody but the person who turned it, okay? I'm not trying to get to that, but we have been working diligently, and.
And now it's to be resolved.
And, and we're resolving it.
Right.
And, and we are resolving, and the thing is, is with her medical, and now my brother is having foot surgery, so I'm in the midst of working this down the street here, taking care of him, he can't basically get out of bed for four months. So, I've been juggling, and.
I just did, yeah.
And she's got no baby, you know, and, uh, and, uh, I just asked the court, a guest here. We appreciate the patience everybody has, and it is something that does need to be taken care of.
It needs very small, you need to get it cleaned up.
No, when you go there, what I think, what we're trying to get to is, like, there's a fence on the adjacent property, is that where we need to end?
I don't know.
Well, this is why you basically, I mean, don't get me wrong.
We haven't been on the property, we have not assessed it.
Okay, so there's a fence, there's a fence, and, uh, so the fence, if we get everything to that fence, I think the fence itself, would that be a line that we just?
We need to go to the property and move it.
That would be okay then, and if you're gonna pass that fence?
Mario, you're not understanding, but they're saying their plan is down past the trench, it's not the fence, it's further down.
So, I'm.
They let you buy the property, but they.
Okay.
It, it doesn't, so I can help, I understand, I help her.
Uh, if you line up the front of the neighbor's house and go directly north inside, where could, you could see the line.
This is the property, where you said this is the fence, the property line is on the other side of the fence, so it's on the fences, and are there, if you can see how the property.
Uh, so we could, so we could move this stuff back to that line, correct?
Yeah, that's.
There's no moving those back.
I mean, these are.
And then, all, it's whatever's over here too, now, all of these are not, but there's what's over here too.
Yeah, there's, uh, yeah. These are the store. Yeah. None of this is there.
No.
We'll see, so over here, kind of this is there.
Right, that can change, but there are still vehicles there, right? And those need to be moved, there's no storage.
Or, like, could we come with?
Like, store RVs and campers in your front yard, they have to be in an enclosed storage.
That's not true.
Yes, it is, it's, it's in the ordinance, yeah, it's true for every homeowner.
I'm not arguing.
I, I know, but there's, there's, there's trailer courts that are approved for that. That's a, that's a residential zone.
And homeowners association have their own rules and their own enforcement, and we're gonna address that, so.
But that's a regular city, city name.
So, when I was in Scappus, and Larry was getting these trailers, you think you should have said something then?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not arguing with her, I'm just trying to understand. But, uh, when she put a man, however long ago, why wasn't anything said then?
It wasn't me, it was Larry.
Pardon me, sir, we, we have a long mystery of trying to address.
Yeah, it's complaint driven. We're not, because we don't.
Yeah.
Not for you, it's fine.
The reason why I wasn't talked to at that time, the city is complaint driven, we don't have a staff for a small town. A lot of people have vehicles, but when there's complaints, then we have to uphold the ordinance. And that's what's happening right now, so we have to say that the ordinance reads that you can't store RVs or cars that haven't been moved for more than seventy-two hours can't be stored in your front yards. If they are, they have to be in an enclosed structure.
And right now, we're really trying to get the right of way.
A car that hasn't been moved in seventy-two hours has to go in an enclosed structure?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance, you can read the ordinance, but there's no homeowner, so.
It's twenty-nine and one sixty-four.
Right, so that means the city determines the enforcement.
So.
So, you don't have to drive, you drive.
So, you don't have to discuss, you know, there's cars that are always parked there.
And we are going, we are addressing this.
That's their problem.
Can you get a copy of the ordinance, it's one sixty-four online, and it's also ordinance twenty-nine.
Yeah, twenty-nine is what you have.
So, I believe you guys, I mean, you guys know the law, I don't.
It, it strictly says in there, but.
But you can, you can, we've been working, so then I had foot surgery, it's been three years, and so I found out, and my brother, but she's got nobody to help her, her help is so bad, um, with her diabetes, and I'm not trying to make excuses.
Right.
I just.
I'm willing to do it, just physically.
And, uh, I'm doing what you're doing, we're just friends, so we can just really work together, and I know it needs to be done.
We've been working.
Okay.
And at this point, uh, time's up.
How have you been working, you send the cops to my house to harass me? You guys are constantly nagging and harassing, there's no help.
No, the thing is.
You're not helping.
Well, the thing is, is this world's a mess.
Yes, we understand it, and your five minutes are up, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, the world is a mess, you guys, and one little thing that's not gonna, not going to.
Yeah, worse than it deep, but if, okay.
Not going to, like.
So, any other public comments? Okay, go close to hearing again.
So, what's, uh, so what time, I mean, I can't help as much as my brother, right? She's got no life, so, I mean, it's mostly a plea.
Mayor, would you mind, Mario, the state, for this, rest of this meeting, if you could? We're just gonna pass the resolution. The public hearing is closed.
No, we will discuss it, though.
Right. Between us, the public hearing is closed?
Right.
Yeah.
We'll thank Dorothy.
Do you want to listen to the discussion on the resolution?
Give me a discussion on the resolution.
Thank you for your time.
Mario, do you want to listen to the rest of the discussion on this?
It won't matter, will it?
It's a fine.
Well, I would love to, actually, but my brother, I'd like to have. All right, you guys, all thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get out of here.
No, but. Okay, so open it up for discussion, or, um. Yes. I also. Yes. So, maybe I'm not reading this right. So, resolution ordering the abatement, so this is directed, the, um, um, now therefore to resolve, it disclaims junked-in vehicles that belong to the owner in violation of our code, and orders the abatement of violation by the immediate removal of junked-in vehicles placed illegally on Cook Avenue by the owner.
I need to strike out by the owner of thirty-five Cook Avenue.
Yes.
Okay, and, and just say all vehicles, essentially is what it is.
Okay, but then, what, what's concerning to me, right? Furthermore, the city council orders the city recorder to file a lien with the cost of this abatement of the violations against the property at thirty-five South East. So, essentially, we're not asking the owner to do anything anymore. We're saying that the city is going to abate the problem, and then file a lien. So, um, that means that those, the vehicles will be removed, and the stuff that's in the right of way that they were talking about will be pushed back, or what, the one, so, and, and she says they're not movable, so what happens to those vehicles that are on the right of way in front of a property, not the vehicles, but the, the structures and stuff?
What we should do, and the way it's been handled in the past, is get somebody out there to give us a quote on cleaning up that, that right of way. Moving the vehicles, moving the stuff back, um, what that is. In the past, when this has happened in this city, there's been a quote, and at the time, the council would, would go ahead and say, do it, you know, one more time, do it, you know, maybe someone can change, but this says we want to do this. Um, we can come back again and say, well, here's how much it is, but this just says we're gonna skip that step, whatever it costs, but we're gonna get somebody to go out there and quote us, it's not gonna be our staff. And it will have support.
Yes, Lindsay?
Um, I think the idea of moving stuff back is not right, anything that's on the right of way, we should remove.
Yeah, because if you move it back, the ordinance still states you can't have clutter, flocks, and jets, and you can't have, if you read the ordinance, all that stuff can't be moved, you can't store that kind of stuff in your property.
Right, right, right now, though, we're trying to focus on the rights of way. The rest of it is a more challenging situation.
Yes.
Um, that's part two.
But that's because it's not only about the, it, the, the second paragraph says violations of abandoned vehicle, junk, and buried trash and debris on the property, so this abatement is related to all of that then, not just?
Um, but we should change it to say on the rights of way, uh, just that on the city's rights of way, just take out the property. Uh, because we don't want to get into that situation yet, that's a very difficult situation, and I'm gonna need more guidance from LCSO or our attorney.
So, would we, um, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, just clarifying, then it would re.
So, we just move on the property, just remove, um, within the city's rights of way.
So, it's a view. On the city's, you strike on the property and what?
And right, just change it to within the city's rights of way.
If I can, there's, there's more to this also. Um, there's a sewer easement on the north side of the property that runs east to west from the center of Cook Street through the side of the yard on the north side. And that needs to have a ten-foot clearing, so if the sewer line breaks, our equipment needs to get in there and repair that. The requirements of the property, when you purchase the property, to absorb that easement for that sewer being, and it feeds the whole neighborhood in the back, um, and the homes in the back. So, that is full of, um, there's a, there's an abandoned camp trailer, um, and a lot of debris, garbage on that whole entire north side that is the entryway to the front side door of the double-wide trailer, it's on the main house. Along with all the prop, all the, the, the right of way, it's all the garbage. So, so really, we need to maybe address that, all the debris and garbage and abandoned vehicles that are on the easement, the sewer easement also.
Do we change that in the quarter? To reflect the, all of these stuff on the easement?
Are, are we talking about just the rights of way only?
It's the right of way and si, and sewer easement.
Right, so that's what we're addressing tonight, is just the rights of way, so that right of way, the forty-four, right of way.
The sewer easement, is it the easement or rights of way?
Right, the forty-four road rights of way.
Yeah, yeah.
But not the sewer.
It's, it's a, it's a sewer right of way.
Where's the sewer right of way?
It was, they just explained, it was down east to west, down the side of the car.
Yeah, we're stuck in the photo, I can show you.
Okay, but is it in the street or on the right of way?
No, no.
It's on her property.
It's on her property.
Okay, so that's a different issue. Um, we're not, we're only here to talk about the city rights of way, um, about abandoning sewer easement, I think is a different.
Different issue.
A whole different environment, so I would have to address that from a different way.
Yeah. Yeah. Different step, yeah, that is it.
Yes.
Just like the.
Let's get the rights of way.
Yeah, well, got you. That makes sense, that'd be a subsequent step.
It's all, all this right in here.
Right.
But most of the debris, it is in the right of way of the street, so getting that would be a start.
Okay. And I have a question, please. Um, Ms. Brady? Oh, ready? Brady, do we have any, um, RVs or any other, uh, uh, property we need to, in the city right of way that we need to abate right now?
Um, there is a, uh, RV that is abandoned on Melody that Mayor and I have worked on in the last couple of years that does need to be repaired, and that's due to vacancy.
Never mind, you did a good job, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing to what was just said, I heard today that North Lincoln Cemetery has charged a one hundred and fifty-dollar demolition, demolition, demolition fee on RVs, and then the tonnage to dispose of, which I think is just, you know, it's a marvelous, you know.
And we have a grant from this county, isn't it?
Yeah, they, they have to have a, uh, asbestos abatement.
Right. Yes.
Okay, if I could just comment on this thing, what I. Okay, if I could just comment on this thing. What I was saying to Mario and Mondo was that uh, to look at this from a different angle. This abatement process is actually a boon to people who can't get the stuff off. The city off is essentially gonna come in and fix the problem. It's gonna be done on our dime right now. It's gonna beautify her property and she's not gonna have to pay for it until the property sells. This is a, and I and I think if people live it like that, it's uh, I mean, this idea that nobody here can help, that's a quote. Or there's no help, that's absolutely wrong. The city is is being really the, you know, I think compassionate enough.
There's currently several people living in all those RVs and vehicles on that property.
Well, that's a problem.
That, that's, that is actually a little bit more of a recent concern. I was informed today that um. Several people have used that address to rent, um, we need one. Yes, we, I'm sorry, can you, several people, at least three different people have used that address to say they're a resident of Depot Bay for the community hall. Two of those are passed. I've asked our deputy to reach out to the third one and verify, and verify, um. Residents, residents, they're getting the residential rate and residential community hall. So.
We're gonna start checking.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we have been sorry about that.
Uh, address. It's a check address.
Oh, yeah, well, that's another issue. So what's the one that's. Right, it's another issue, exactly. But I'm sorry, are the ones that are occupied on the city right-of-way? Maybe maybe in front of them are, depends on right-of-way.
Part, part, part of all those vehicles are are on the right-of-way.
So, I I mean, I wanna move on too, but doesn't just throw a wrench in into the, into the issue of getting.
For basically, it's gonna be difficult.
So we're not going, because that, I mean, all different laws are triggered directly, you know, in Canada, people, you know. Maybe our deputies and sergeant can address whether or not we will, what, when we, when we go after the RVs, there goes and so on.
I, I'll pop my head personally, if you don't know, just because of the abatement process itself. Typically, evictions would have to take place, but again, you guys are not the evictors. They're on private property, so sorry to fail my head more insight, but. I personally.
Well, they're on our property, not private property, correct?
The RVs are on private property.
Part of. Part of.
Half, but they're still on private property.
Yeah.
My inclination would be the same, is there may be eviction process that needs to take place if there are people residing in the RVs.
Right. We're just looking at the right-of-ways. Well, if the if the note is on the right-of-way, is that what you're saying? I mean, I'd be, I mean, is it two inches, it's four inches? I mean, the idea of kicking people out or.
No, we're not going to. Yeah, at this time.
Well, I'm not sure what I heard. I'm sorry, I'm not tracking very well.
They're about one on.
It's a side of what is only.
Most of them are um halfway on the right-of-way and the the large one on the north side is about one-third into the right-of-way.
So, um.
But we're not gonna address those, right?
Yeah.
Well, except the resolution says the right-of-way. So if it's on the right-of-way, we are gonna address it, which means. From what I just heard, I would have been on the tracking, but that the. That part of the abatement will be to start an eviction process.
I agree with Fran, Mary. We have to, you know, we gotta move forward on this and.
Right.
And and these are sticking on the, on the property there. We've got to abate this uh, in that.
Well, that's, well, that's not what I do not agree on, because I'm. Well, that's not what I notice is, you're you're correct, Council Rec, that would be part of the abatement process would be. On hand, working with LCS or our C E O, I doubt what we need to do. Our code does not allow living on, in RVs on property.
Right.
Um, so that's a, but that's violation is just a separate violation, so. Um, one we would have to address. It's probably a multi-pronged effort, yeah.
So and on different timelines, I assume to evict you probably in three months or some, some sort of notice and.
We wouldn't be the experts in timelines if we have to refer to Council or our sports services division may have better information, but KLS may refer to Council overall.
We may research that, yeah. So, um, I'm sorry, what was it? I really left the weak frame, um, so, um, the property owner, my assistant, um, left without hearing things. So it'd be prudent to try to write a letter and at least reframe it like that, that we're gonna be. I know you don't have time, you know, we heard you didn't have time, but all the things that Mr. Bees has said about that brain. True and helpful, you know, that we are trying to help, we can do the work for you, they'll be leaning on the property when you sell, I forget all the things you said. The other part, though, um, is was not clear, I mean, it wasn't clear to me, nor until late this discussion, that. There's gonna be a part that deals with, you know, you can't, you know, what we talked about when they were in the room, was you can't, you know, have. RVs or cars that are more than seventy-two hours without a fence, but we didn't say you can't have people living in them. So I think we need to inform them pretty quickly, even though the abatement process will take long or longer. We we can get going on some of the things, but that eviction and whatever, that's gonna be a huge deal. And it'll disrupt a lot of people's lives. So I think we need to inform the property owner that that's gonna be a part of that process.
It's code violation, right? They need to be informed of a separate code violation.
Correct.
So Brady, how long will it take to get the quote on the cleanup?
I don't know, I'm gonna have a, I'll I'll do some research. To find out if we can get a contractor. There are some contractors that do cleanup properties, but it's usually abandoned home removal, not so much.
Cars.
Cars and garbage and things like that and and trashing.
Okay.
Paul Sykes from the county has some communication.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I have some contacts.
Okay, so are we going to pass this resolution tonight with corrections to it?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept resolution nine uh, five four four dash twenty-three? Resolution ordering the abatement of the city's rights of way at thirty-five southeast Cook Avenue.
I'm I'm changing that, Madam Mayor, to rights of way, um, on Cook Avenue.
Okay. Okay.
On Cook Avenue. So.
Is there a second?
One second.
So I moved a second into go forward with corrections to resolution. By four hundred and twenty-three as submitted. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and so we'll do a letter also, um, to the property owner, letting her know when to clean up those parts. And that it will be moved to her property.
We'll, we'll want to just simply say that this is what we, there's a notice form that says with the council, that next we would indicate to her that we would start procedures. From the fire, because we don't have a name yet, so.
Right.
Um, and I would do a reframe of that, Mr. Bees, as well.
As as in addition to the legal notice of that, so.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay. We've got the second reading, Public Hearing Ordinance number three four two dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two, the City of Depot Bay Harbor ordinance. Is there a motion to read this by title only?
I'm like that, I should bring that down.
Is there a second?
Second. And just clarify, this is a second reading.
Second reading, didn't I say that? Second, maybe don't, yeah, I think I did, I apologize. How do I do it? It's the second reading of ordinance number three four two dash twenty-three. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Is this a public?
Yeah, this is a public.
No, it's just a second reading.
It's a public hearing.
In public hearing, okay, so I'll open the public hearing on ordinance number three four two dash twenty-three.
Uh, just so you know, I made the changes. If you notice, I, that was the only thing that came out of the last meeting that I can recall. So, um, we can move to a proposal, if you, the motion to.
Okay, hearing no comments from the public. I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion to accept ordinance number two four two dash twenty-three as submitted. I'll read that. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
So I moved a second to accept harbor ordinance three four two dash twenty-three. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ready? Thank you. We've got a guest presentation from our harbor master who.
Before he does that, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, I forgot to put Lincoln County Sheriff on this.
Oh, our sheriff.
Okay. And I didn't know if anybody had any feedback from his report, or want to talk about the city. I'm not just gonna be angry, though.
I know, yeah. Maybe message me.
I have one problem.
Tell me.
You need to catch more speeders. But I have a question to ask you, if you'd mind, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So I was driving back from a conference today in Eugene and I was going through Junction City, I think it was. And I was watching the speeds and everything, it's a small town, but I got up and you know one of those speed things?
Mm-hmm.
I was going faster than I should have been because it showed my speed and it flashed red and blue lights.
Mm-hmm.
I want one of those.
I think I know the council would want one of those.
But I guess my question is, is because after I passed it, I was with other people, I did see a cop and he was coming out of road.
Hmm.
He didn't go wreck anybody, but that red and blue, does that mean there's a cop and you're about to get busted or is that a threat?
Probably a threat.
Okay, it was just coincidence that he was there?
Uh, I don't, I, I don't actually know, but probably just a threat.
It was just a coincidence that he was there?
They probably want you to get to a certain speed above what his speed is, it probably starts flashing you.
Okay, so I mean.
Just like the school notes it says, like, once you go like twenty-eight, whatever it is, it's a slowdown.
Yeah.
It's that same, probably that same concept.
I just love that. It was very, um, abrupt. Can't miss it. How are things going?
They're going well. Um, this was kind of a weird, I think, what, like a month and a half since I've been here last. Um, I was out of sick for an entire week and then Clay and Paul borrowed me for last weekend for the Eclipse event. That I would say was a huge letdown.
Oh.
Um, we actually, we could see it, but they were expecting a huge, lots of people and they just didn't show up. Um, but it was still fun, different seeing it for a weekend. Um, why wasn't highways down there? People driving like a hundred miles an hour. And this, I would say, pretty much they got by. But, but no, it was, it was fun. I heard it was cloudy here.
Yeah. Big festival.
Far, but yeah. Um, winter is kind of here, it was actually really warm up today, but with the winter months coming in, is there anything the city council can think of that? They would like to see from the sheriff's office? Um, I mean, spews also gonna be, and trucks also gonna be, and we, we that, at least, and will continue to, um, but if there's anything that's.
So. I'm gonna ask a question. Sure, sure, sure. Um, I had a question on it. Is it, is it a legal camp?
Mm-hmm.
So tell me about that.
So a legal camp would just be basically a transient camp instead of someone on public property.
Where?
I checked, I got word that there might be one out on the north point.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanted to check it out. And there was a few scattered items, but no.
So we're not saying that as a problem?
No, and since I've started, I've had one illegal camp, but it was actually set on private property. I talked to the guy and he was right on. Other than that, illegal camp, transient camps are not an issue as of yet, but like this, so that might change.
Yes.
I noticed on Sunset Street that that car is back in front of the fence, or a car is back.
I forgot that today, but it hasn't moved, it's not staying there all the time. But I did start doing some more laps up there and didn't see today, but to keep it from getting to four or five cars, eventually, I'll be doing more laps up there now that I know it. I think it's the same person who, who was in Chonakow.
Is it supposed to put no parking lanes?
Yeah, we have a couple barricades beyond signs we put up, so we're working, there's a native that's pretty religion about cars.
So yes, I would definitely do that.
Yes, I I heard it when I was, I was calling, I think they were there.
Okay.
Um, I noticed a motorcycle crash. It looked pretty bad, um.
I don't, I don't know, Sergeant, I was not working. I don't know if Sergeant Vale was on for that one. I have heard about it, but.
Yeah.
I don't have any details.
Somebody back to him that looked like.
I actually don't have any details on it. Um, I think, I think I would too.
Okay. It's okay. Yeah.
I think it was to ultimately handle that, I think.
Yeah.
I was actually, when it happened, I stopped to get that dang caramel popcorn at the corner to get their stuff.
Walk out in front of the traffic.
No, uh, the lady was in there watching the photographers, the accident, and what she told me is that she saw it. A car was coming, motorcycle was here, the car went in a parking spot.
I did read, that's right, I did read that.
So cut, cut, um.
It could.
And she saw him being taken away, he had a, on a stretcher, he had a. We don't know, you know, that much, but.
I saw him driving.
Um, some kind of trauma and and stabilizing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I really like they should do in the coffee with an officer, I saw they had one at Pirate Coffee. I think that's a really great way to get involved with the community.
I wish I could say I was a part of that specific week, but I don't know, Sergeant, I think Sergeant Vale was, so yeah, so I think Sergeant Vale was, I was kind of bummed after that, I missed that one.
Nevermind. I think I read that you all might do that quarterly.
That's the plan, I think, yes.
Yeah, that's awesome. I'm assuming throughout, making the coming?
Yeah, I think we're gonna do one in each of the contract cities, I understand, so we'll be back.
We had quite the turnout of.
Really, I know, so I was, I actually forgot that I missed it, but then when I came back to work, I looked, oh, I could use that.
Yeah.
I look forward to it, it was, it's lovely. So, next time. Um, and just hope, so for some clarification, I am not, when we're on this house, they may think that I've been talking with her. Three times since we started this five months ago, so. But we're, we're not, we're beyond there.
No, that's, we know that.
It's just I wanna make sure that's clear, yeah.
Pretty weird, sir.
Thank you. We really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Um, but again, if there's any other kind of stuff that you just think that you want me to do, areas to be around.
I might have one. Down in the community hall, there's a dark car with the last, with CK. Anyway, would you, they're parking right on the end of a Coast Guard, they said that, and I've seen them there several times.
Okay. Okay.
So I think last year, somebody had been using that as a space park.
Okay.
And sometimes those one over nine, so.
I will, I will do that.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you for the report. It's so helpful. Now, Roy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, for those, for those who don't, again, Roy Billups, I'm the harbor master here, been here about five years, so. Um, recently, I was able to go to the city coast congress of harbor masters and port managers conference that was held up in Valdez, Alaska. Um, it was a great opportunity. Um, it was really an informative conference. Unfortunately, got, uh, hear a lot of people talking, didn't get to see a lot of the, of the land, but that's how it goes. Um, some of the things I took away from the conference was, uh, that down in Harbor, there is a lot of emergency preparedness that I can do. Um, the city can do for the big what-if. Um, one of those presentators, presenter, excuse me, uh, talked about things like, uh, doing drills with your local fire department, post guard. Um, things such as boat fires, um, chemical spills, things that we have the potential of having that could occur around here. And so I took that to heart and so far, I've talked to the post guard about setting up drills and I still need to reach out to the fire department to try to set up. Some kind of drill that we can make sure that we're prepared as best we can for, like I said, the big what-if. Um, other things that were talked about at the, um, the conference were things like projects. T and D presented on their very large project they're doing for Noma, Alaska over the next few years. Six hundred and eighteen million dollars worth of project that's ninety percent funded by the government grants and ten percent by the city and maybe kind of jocks. They get those kind of grants and things like that, but they're also accommodating cruise ships, commercial ships, and ten percent military. they get those kind of grants and things like that, but they're also accommodating cruise ships, commercial ships, and ten percent military vessels in there too. Uh, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump around here a little bit, along with, uh, some of the training things, I was looking at the hazard operator training for uh, myself, plus maybe a few other staff down there, which is hazardous waste operations and response, again, just to make sure that we're ready. And also, um, taking some basic electrical classes, so, um, that would be so, things like pedestals on the docks, if they're having plugs go out on, which unfortunately is all air, and just being where we are, happens quite often, we can save money on on life savings in every single time this happens, so, something that I can take on and hopefully ease up for the city for paying on. Another great thing was, uh, just the networking with other, um, people of the Har- harbors from Southern California all the way up to Alaska, people from British Columbia were there also, and so I was able to talk to a lot of them about things like, uh, things that are left on docks, how they deal with, uh, mortgage holders, um, fueling and, or municipal own fueling sales, and, uh, all the way down to fish disposal and things like that. I did have a couple of pictures printed out. And the first one is a picture of one of their mini boats up there, but this cage apparatus they have, that's how they dispose of their fish carcasses. They have their fish cleaning tables, and they send all the carcasses down a chute that land into this floating basket. They attach that to their boat, pick it out to a certain depth, pull the lever and drop it on the bottom, and so they don't have to really contend with all the, the smells, kind of like what we do, and so it was, not that we would ever go to something like this necessarily, but it was at least an eye-opener to say that, okay, there are different ways other than what we have in place right here, so that was one of the things that I took from there was, I mean, just giving some ideas and being open-minded to like new ideas also. Um, other things that I noticed also were, um, on their docks, the picture that's just to the right of that one, all these yellow roofs are all safety equipment, those are all, uh, egress points for on the docks, and they're at every single, um, finger slip actually. So someone falls in water, there, there's already safety equipment in place for somebody to climb out, and they don't necessarily have to run and grab the ladders, come back, and try to keep track, keep track of people and so on, so.
Can I ask you a question, I'm sorry, are you just black, I didn't understand, so, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that was.
And the ladders?
Yes, they are. Just a simple hoop with, uh, rums, if not, you just add them, hold their food in the docks, so I thought that was really a cool way to have it. Um, down in Harbor, I've had people always say how weird, they like to have more lights, and I know that, uh, we can't necessarily do the exact same thing they have up there, but they have, I guess there were probably about eighty-foot light poles there that just lit up the entire area, um. Keep a better eye on things, safety, keep people out of there, it's all the way up. Again, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around, in the picture of the harbor with all the lights on there, there's this, uh, thing in the bottom left corner where it's the long chute going down to the, um, basket. And that is how they transport their fish waste to those baskets, and then those baskets are just, like you said, attached to the boat, they go offshore and come down that way, so. Um, and then on the left was the harbor master for Vale, he's given us to talk about their facilities, um, just all the different resources they've been able to obtain, all the different projects they've been able to do, and how they keep their facility running. But yeah, along with, like I said, a lot of good resources, a lot of good connections were made, and so since I've been back, I've already talked to um, probably three different facilities, just picking their brains on, okay, how do you do this, how do you do that, you're having this issue, how do you, you deal with this issue, so. But I think it was a, a great opportunity, and hopefully I can start getting some of these practices in effect.
Wonderful. Any questions for me?
Yeah, thank you very, thank you.
Just wondering, um, uh, getting these private property off docks.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
How's that going?
It's going very well, actually, um, we put our fires down there and gave everybody three or four weeks or something to get it done, um, after that date happened, I went down there and cleaned up the, the last of the straggling stuff, and so far it's been pretty good, it hasn't been reaccumulated yet, yeah.
Are they all the crab pods off the dock?
No, crab pods are just on the docks, but all the other stuff is off the docks.
Wasn't it, uh, they're supposed to be on the docks by the fifteenth of October?
Uh, not until twenty twenty-four.
No, no, just by our consisting, but. That change replaced that.
In twenty twenty-four.
That's how it used to be, was they had a certain date to have it off by the end of the year, but I was under the impression that.
I think they were only allowed to have them on the docks to the end of the. But, but he's working on them, counselor, I, I talked to him about it today, and he's, he's gonna talk them even so, because the normal process is to rid them. So there's no, really no reason to keep them on the docks, but he's gonna, he's gonna reach out to folks who. He's had people ask him, and he's going to be, have him do that.
Any other questions?
Yes, what, um, are you taking the finger docks off then?
Yes. I was, I've taken two off, and I was gonna get two of them today, but then other things got in the way, so tomorrow morning is when we're.
Because I'm starting to see the bugs disappear.
Yes, no, that is very, very high tonight to do with, so hopefully tomorrow morning is when that is gonna be, gonna make us uncomfortable.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You want to visit us more often?
All righty. Moving on, we've got the commission, committee reports, emergency preparedness, uh, let's see, which one was it?
Uh, well, the, we met not this week, but the week before Monday, and we decided to start meeting twice a month.
Mm-hmm.
So now we'll be meeting the second and the fourth Monday, uh, at four thirty. And so that makes our next meeting the twenty-third, and then the following meeting after that, I believe, is the thirteenth of November, and that's when they're gonna try to radio train again.
I have a question.
Um, can I?
So we're done with the report, yeah.
Sure.
Um, the only thing I, I must add, we do have a new chair, um, Lucy resigned from that position, we have Karen Andreca as the new chair, and she is, um, she's, um, have been involved with the homeowners association in Stonebridge, which she has a lot of experience and stuff, and she's really good job for that. Um, I would imagine that all of you have heard that Ginny Dumaris, who is the emergency manager for Lincoln County, uh, is no longer in that position. Um, so we don't have, um, a replacement name at this time, but we wish her all the best for her future endeavors, and, let's see.
That's really valuable, thank you. You have a question?
I did, uh, I, this is not a criticism, uh, that my question is, how does a committee go from one meeting a month to two meetings a month, or a commission, I should say, without council authority unless it's written into the ordinance?
Good question. Um, we determined that we needed two meetings a month, because we were just not getting a amount of work done that we wanted to do. And so that decision was made at the last meeting, um, Ken, what do we need to do to get that into ordinance?
Um, if it's in the ordinance, but it's only one meeting a month, if it says at least one meeting a month, then the, uh, committee can have many meetings as they want.
Okay.
If it's only one meeting a month, and specific to that, we would just present an ordinance update.
So does it, does it take staff resources, or do you guys take your own notes?
Oh, I'm, I take the minutes. I still attend because I feel like it's very important to have someone from the city staff which have these meetings, to, um, so they, mostly because I, so I didn't work so long.
What research sort of means? Okay, um, Harbor. Did you have anything?
No, I'm.
Andres first, okay. Uh, Houseless Committee did meet, we are going to have a public hearing on November, I'm sorry. Um, regarding the ordinance for, uh, Cameron, the Houseless, November, do you remember, Ken? Twenty-four? I don't remember, I think, I don't remember, first Monday.
Third.
Thanks, Danny.
No, it's a Monday, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I didn't do know that.
Okay, so. I didn't know it was Monday.
November twenty-seventh, yeah, we got it, okay.
It's Monday and Thursday.
That's the Houseless Committee, that's a public hearing on the ordinance that we're getting, uh, before.
That's a special city council meeting?
It's a public hearing on the ordinance, it's not a council meeting.
It's a, I'm pardon me, it's a, like a town hall, just, you know, for people to come in, drop by their, yeah.
Oh, you can do it.
Yeah, just to give feedback on the ordinance, and then what would happen is that we'd go back to the houses to be based on feedback to revise the ordinance if necessary, then it would come to the city council.
What time is it? Uh, we said four to six.
I was gonna say, I think we said four to six.
Oh.
Four to six.
Let's see, planning, anything on planning, okay, parks, anything on parks?
Parks, okay.
Parks are okay, and seven, Beanie, come on up, Beanie.
Well, the good news is officially going up the creek.
I got to see it, it was so much fun.
There'll be more, you know, and, and the real key is after the really heavy rains. We need that pen. I think the cost of that is eighteen hundred dollars, all covered by private contributions from, really, in Harbor. They know what the sand is worth, you know? Uh, the tenth that page was, for next year is officially set on July thirteenth. And, uh, our next official, we're not very good at having scheduled meetings, but our, the next Sand and Enhancement schedule meeting is gonna be Saturday, November eighteenth, ten p.m., we're gonna be able to cycle, we'll be putting fish cans in, turn hatch boxes, things like that, if you're interested in attending one of our meetings, please come up.
They couldn't hear the date.
Saturday, November eighteenth, ten a.m.
Wait, I guess, we, we done it, I have a question, or?
Well, I have a question, I'm not exactly.
Just have a question, and, um, just letting you know, and saying enhancement, just know, after drawing pictures, um, anyway, the city is gonna have a, um, work session on November seventh, um, about, uh, protecting the watershed, if there's acquisition of watershed, or protection of watershed, possibly.
We were aware of that, and, and, uh, some of us would like to be invited, that was last in my notice here.
You're invited.
Some of the people on the committee are hands-on, working with fish, things like that, and they don't like to get involved with paperwork, city governments, or things like that, we have some other people, uh, on there that are just stumping, to get going on the stream stewardship thing, and there's a lot of energy there. The, the thinking of, what I understood from Sand and Enhancement is that, um, the stream steward project might be out of Sand and Enhancement at another entity, and so members that want to work on that and collaborate with other pieces, or, um, you know, would be involved in which Sand and Enhancement would be, would be an advisory part of it, I mean, I just couldn't get the people that didn't want to play, and then there's all these different spectrum energies, so we thought that that would be the best, we opted to jumpstart that program, get those people together, you know, and do that, uh, stream stewardship thing from the top to the bottom, it's kind of a little more independent thing, I think what I understood, right, it, part of this is we couldn't get too many people over and under the fish committee.
Right, so we ran into the public meeting call with issues with the, how many people can be, so meetings weren't over there and that stuff.
Volunteering, so that seemed like the, the best approach, best way around, uh, timing to be there on the setup, but we want to just I know we can do it from top to the bottom, but it's a lot of shit, you know, and those fish that are going up there, they didn't make it up to the, the top end of the creek. It's a stretch between community hall and Collins, there's not many pools in there, um, that's what we want to develop and get going, you know? There's a lot of benefit for the Sand and Enhancement project, but there's all benefit for everyone. It's all that, I mean.
Any other questions for Beanie?
Your honor.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment, there are people all over Oregon who only think, who think that the only thing that happens in the Bay is the Sand and Enhancement Commission, and I, and I think that's a great testament to Beanie's efforts, so.
A lot of people think that, I haven't been carrying the torch for a while.
Maybe they're right.
And we appreciate it.
The fish going up the creek and the bin button, that sells that program to anybody that has Beanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beanie. All righty. Um, are there any public comments? Can we just make sure there isn't any, yeah, one, any hands raised?
No.
Nope, no hands, okay. Uh, is there unfinished business? I think we are, um, going to be drafting a lot of instructions to our community to draw on the letter, okay?
Right, so there's no action, that's me.
Your honor, I would like to make a, a motion, this is item number one, property acquisition. And I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing, uh, explaining how the city has, uh, adopted one point one four nine million dollars for the purchase of new parks, new parks. Uh, inviting the public to weigh in on how it would like to spend this money, including, uh, the possibility of purchasing uh, a waterfront park, or to use funds to expand existing parks. That is my motion.
All righty, is there a second? Um, Counselor Ray, you're here, so you'd like my attention to the table.
Okay, thank you.
There was a motion on the floor to hold a public hearing regarding the purchase of, uh, public lands. Right, Counselor, you see?
Inviting the public to weigh in on how it would like to spend the one point one four nine million dollars, uh, and, and explain to them that, uh, it can be spent on a waterfront park, or it can be, perhaps, expand existing parks, but you get the public input on this.
I will actually second his motion. Okay, is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes, yes, um, so this property, um, acquisition, um, has already, um, been determined to be a city priority, it's in our plans, long-range plans, and it's written to our, um, uh, documents. And, um, it has already been identified as a priority property, um, by the community, they have supported, um, um, by fundraisers, the efforts way in the past that had raised seventy-seven thousand dollars, because people were supporting the city plans, and, um. Um it's it's unnecessary to have another public hearing to um indicate support for something. If we want to prioritize other lands, that would be another public process. But this is already been determined to be essential for completing our vision for a senior land acquisition in downtown area. So I'll be voting in opposed to that motion.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah. Uh I would only say that, that I think things have changed quite a bit since the extent lands process was proposed. Uh what we're seeing right now in Depot Bay is tremendous amount of development going on. Uh it's gonna be putting, that is already putting pressure on our existing park system. And uh I think that uh no matter what we decide to do, that it could not hurt, it would be very beneficial. To offer the people of Depot Bay a chance to just come in here some evening and in the not distant future. And comment on their parks and how they would like to see this money spent, with its public money. It should not be spent by this city council in the dark of night without any public in.
It's not being done in the dark of night, this has been in the works for a very long time, and if and when we acquire the property, we can hold. A workshop or a get together or a hearing to discuss how we want that park to be and what we want it to look like, but. We're, you're getting a little out of order with the thing, the way things are going with this land acquisition.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Uh motion is denied. Okay. Um Harbor docks project response to the bid, has everyone had a chance to read uh with our project manager? Has come forth with, so basically, it stipulates that um we can accept a lower bid. And Kim, have you worked with the attorney on this before?
Uh yes, if I might, and I did communicate this to P and D, they were aware of the fact that I had reached out to our city attorney. And what I was told by our city attorney was that because our attorney did not craft. The contract documents, the contract that they needed to weigh in on P and D who did. And their folks needed to weigh in on the applicability of that recommendation and how it's fitting within our contract documents. So P and D wrote that letter in support of that, and it's just up to the council to um either affirm their. Uh motion to award to. Advanced American, sorry, sorry, John. Or um deny it and move forward with protest, which I can be honest, I'm not that sure about.
Okay, so at this time, I think we need a motion to accept the response to the bid request protest uh from our engineers.
So.
Uh please, uh maybe, maybe the motion, pardon me, I should have put something down here, maybe the motion should be to. Um affirm your original motion to award the Harbor docks two three four project to. P and D's recommendation of paying American.
And to um. Reject a bid protest. So, should I start over?
No, if somebody wants to.
Yeah, so.
That's a bad idea, it's not. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to um. Direct um to approve. Our.
Affirm.
Affirm the um response from our, our engineers as to the the bid response. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so from here, Kim, then we um.
We will uh craft a response to.
Okay.
Protester and.
Does that come from our attorney?
It will. I will find out for sure, I imagine it's actually going to need to come from the council, meaning that we'll just say that.
Okay.
Obviously, this is what happened and and that Mayor would sign, we can send that off, but I'll.
Do we? I'm sorry.
Um do we need to justify, like uh. Use these talking points as a letter from the council to.
Absolutely, yeah.
But we will take P and D off there and just make it as ours.
Do you have any specific findings regarding these recommendations?
I think all of them.
You're all, okay.
I think even from.
With the.
The first half of the way down.
Who is they?
Who is.
The, the people doing the protests.
They're online right now, so they're listening to all of this, and yes, they want to get the information.
Okay.
And as to what would happen after that would be entirely up to them.
Okay.
All righty.
I think it was clearly identified.
Um also, these are become our findings, right, also our city engineer, our P and D is online. So, Harrison, do you have any questions for him?
Is there a public comment?
This is um different.
Oh, okay, yes.
There is public comment allowed?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can you say your name?
Yeah. This is Todd Ross with Legacy Contracting. And when we did this project, you guys, the P and D had only listed. One foot. And at the bottom of of your bid form, it says, the successful low response bidder will be deemed that bidder. With the lowest responsive price based on, all caps. Base bid amount. Then they added contingencies. And they didn't list how many lineal foot, it's based on one foot. And so. Even if it was one foot and it went twenty five percent over one foot. We are more than fair to renegotiate what the drilling price is gonna be. But P and D wrote in their bid evaluation to you folks to say. In review of the geotechnical data made available to the bidders. Clearly indicates presence of siltstone. If it was clearly indicated, then they should have went ahead and listed a quantity for one hundred or two hundred feet. And so because your guys' documents say. It's only based on the base bid and give us a price on one foot.
It's perfect.
We, we're going to continue to protest it. Because we're, I mean, we've done, we've done projects for Port, for the, you know, over there in the Port of Saguasoff, Port of Brooklyn. Port of Cus Bay, all those projects. Uh up in Washington. And we just, we don't think it's right that. We were the low bid. And then you guys turn around and P and D comes up with, well, you guys should have known it was gonna be one hundred or two hundred feet. If it was that important to the city and P and D to have a quantity. Then. You guys would have listed a quantity for us to estimate off of, but instead they gave one foot. And that's what we were allowed to bid based off of, was one foot.
I think we've got some misunderstanding here, John, would you like to address this uh response?
Um yeah, sure, I um can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um yeah, I don't know where uh. Uh I don't believe that one foot was ever stated anywhere in anything, but um the, the uh. In our opinion, the. The unit price for drilling, although listed as a contingency price. Was uh consider, uh of of legacy contracting was considerably higher than anyone else. And on average, it was nearly three times as high as as all the other bidders. Whether it's one foot or two hundred feet, it doesn't matter, that particular item was extremely high, and so. In the interest of the um, the project and the city. It just doesn't, it uh. In review of the contract documents, it doesn't uh. It doesn't add up. In the favor of the city, and that is really the the bottom line, is that you. It it would be unreasonable to pay. Uh. If you look at the figure that's also in that letter. There is uh, we went ahead and plotted all five bidders. And including the contingency price for drilling. Which uh I think uh by looking at the geotechnical information. It's clear that there is going to be drilling. It doesn't take very long before legacy contracting's bid is is much more expensive than the next two bidders. I think it's unreasonable to um. To accept that bid as it is, and so that's why we made our recommendation.
But you, you agree that there is no approximate quantity and nowhere to put a total amount on, on the bid form that we turned in?
How do you determine um the amount of drilling that's necessary?
Well, it wasn't determined because you guys didn't give a quantity.
You can't. Okay, we're gonna move forward, uh we've made the decision to go forward. And so to close all of the responses. Um we've got tourism program motions and a bid planning committee, has everyone had a chance to read this?
Did you vote for the last?
I think, I, yeah, P and D.
I don't think you voted.
Oh, we did a motion in the second.
Okay.
Okay. Motion for the award of our on a two to four project to American based on P and D recommendations, response to purchase made by Council, getting the. Second by Council, right?
Your honor, uh was it written protest by the.
Yes. Yeah, you received a copy of it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, now we want to do tourism here. And Kim, you had a, an outline, do you want to go through this a little bit, Kim, for us?
At the last meeting during the discussion, um the groups were asked to get together and discuss, and um. Red Miles, who took back the heart, she's here to speak about that and uh part of the report.
Thank you for letting me speak. So. Is it raining out there? No, but I love yellow slippers. Grew up with them. Um so, leading up to the meeting, um a couple of people had asked me. Uh in reference to the um, to the friends and neighbors of, or the friends of Depot Bay charitable organization and the fact that back in July. Right after um the Chamber of Commerce first said up to the council that. They were not gonna be able to do the salmon bake that year, did the city wanna take it on? And I attended the meeting following that, as did some others, and Bruce Trent spoke about his charitable organization at that time. And said that um, that they might have some interest in the salmon bake also. And um because the purpose of the meeting that Council Beasley asked us to have, uh that last council meeting. Uh was to see if we could all come together on some sort of an agreement for a path forward for the salmon bake. So I reached out to Bruce Trent, the president of the friends of Depot Bay. And he supplied me with a letter, I do believe that he sent it to you guys also, so just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to read that. Uh I brought a copy to read if not. So then, we'll move on to the meeting summary, and I'm just gonna read this so that I didn't spend too much time working on it. And I think that I hit all the points, and I hope that I have done so fairly. Uh there were a couple of times that things got a little heated at the meeting, so I've tried not to. Uh throw in my own editorialism uh in regard to that, but. Uh per these, per Councilor Beasley's request, the meeting was held to discuss the future of the annual Depot Bay salmon bake. With the specific goal of attempting to find common ground for a path moving forward for all interested parties. Might find a way to work together, this meeting was held at six P M at the Community Hall on Wednesday, uh October eleventh, twenty twenty three. In attendance were Liz Martin, who acted as our moderator, Kimberly Wallenberg, Valerie Silver, me, Red Miles. Robert Vincent and Melissa Sutter, both of the Chamber of Commerce, Shuley Wosniski and Nicole Moody. Ground rules, excuse me, my voice is getting weird today. Ground rules were presented by the moderator and introductions were made. Each person with an interest, each, each person with an interest in how they saw the salmon bake moving forward was given the chance to speak. With questions being answered and discussion following them on the group. The three ideas presented were, a city committee on tourism promotions and events with a goal of enhancing the ongoing need to address tourism. Promoting our city and creating events such as the salmon bake, that would spotlight our town to both tourists and citizens alike. Valerie Silver, Kimberly, Wallenberg and myself all spoke to the possibilities. And the positivity of this proposed new committee, including the need to revitalize the strong active volunteer dedication that once thrived here in Depot Bay. The Chamber of Commerce stated their willingness to pass the responsibility of the salmon bake to the city along with all equipment, et cetera. If the city approves a committee, that would become the home of the salmon bake. They stated that at this time, the city of Depot Bay would be the only organization they would approve to take over the salmon bake. They stated that if the city does not approve this committee, they would retain, retain the salmon bake for themselves along with all equipment. And find another way forward for twenty twenty four. Shuley Wosniski presented the idea of a new community organization that she's been working on. That might replace the current Chamber of Commerce and would uh be transparent and accountable regarding intent and finances. At the time of the meeting, she had not yet formally established this organization and had no clear timeline for doing so. Nicole Moody was there and supported this organization and spoke to the benefits it could also bring to the community. Their focus seems to be to find a way to overcome the negative division that has apparently been created as a result of the changes. Within the Chamber of Commerce in past year and a half. Although there was agreement that Shuley and her team should go forward with the creation of this organization, if that was the direction they were interested in taking. It was pointed out that the city committee could begin the work of mobilizing toward the goal of the salmon bake twenty twenty four now. Rather than later after a new organization has been structured. Those representing the potential city committee were accused of this having been done, having. Of this being a done deal regardless of the fact that the city council has clearly not yet taken a vote. And was awaiting information from the meeting that we were holding before taking that vote. When Shuley was directly asked if she would be willing to work toward the success of the salmon bake if it were run by an organization other than the one she is proposing. She had again stressed the need for transparency and financial accountability. When she was then directly asked if she could work for the support, or work for or support the salmon bake. If it was overseen by the city of Depot, a city of Depot Bay committee. She said she was unable to work for any entity that had questionable financial practices. Citing an issue with the city's problem handling pensions as an example of the city's financial wrongdoings. She was informed by, she was informed that her information was incorrect, and she was unable to cite any other financial discrepancies. At the end of the meeting, which ran about seventy minutes from start to finish, it was determined that there was no way for these three groups to work together toward the goal of creating a sustainable future for the salmon bake. The chamber will work with the city or, or go forward on their own. Shuley will not work, work with the chamber or with the city. And I am willing to work on the salmon bake as a volunteer, as well as on other events that might benefit the community as a whole. Remain neutral regarding the ongoing controversies regarding the current Chamber of Commerce. My heart is with the city, our health, our and well-being, our community spirit and our traditions. My heart is not with commerce or trade organizations. My heart is not with commerce or trade organizations. I'm not a member of the Chamber of Commerce and don't see myself ever becoming one. I am, however, a proud citizen of Deep Bay, a town I wish I'd never left in the seventies, a town I've always remained part of through family connections, and a town I'm happy to have returned to eight years ago. It's my recommendation that uh, the City Commission on Tourism uh, Promotions and Events be seriously considered and that one of the first projects that we worked toward uh, would be the salmon bake. Any questions?
Thank you for taking that on. Okay, uh, was there any other comments from the meeting?
Yes.
Only. Um, so I was the one who said that it was a foregone conclusion that the committee had been agreed to and I'm sticking to it. And the reason is because Loretta just sat here and said that the Chamber is only willing to work with the committee. There were two proposals presented on that Wednesday. One was a committee to work with the city, the other one was the five oh one C three. My understanding was that two proposals would be offered up to the city and that the city would decide. That was my understanding. That hasn't happened. And so the fact that Loretta has just come here and said that the Chamber will only work with the city tells me that it is a foregone conclusion that the committee is the route that has been chosen without speaking to Shuley, without talking about the five oh one C three, without ever really addressing the other option that another member of the community has brought to the table. So last week, it was very clear to me that everyone in the room had agreed with Loretta, and nobody was really willing to listen to Shuley. I haven't had a foregone conclusion. I just wanted both people to be listened to at the city, and that doesn't seem to be what has happened here. And I have a problem with that. I don't I don't really appreciate showing up and seeing one person of the community sort of uplifted in her idea like and then the other one sort of not respected at all, and she was disrespected. So I'm just here simply to say that two proposals were supposed to be presented, only one was presented, and I don't really think that's a fair way to go about doing this.
We're open to proposals, but we're here for us here tonight.
Shuley, Shuley's, I think she's, I won't speak for Shuley, but I think based on what happened last Wednesday, she was pretty clear that she has not a lot of support with the Chamber or the city, and she was pretty beaten down by the time she left that meeting last week. So both of us sort of left going, that seems like we're gonna be beating our head against the wall. I don't really wanna beat my head against the wall. I really just wanted to see everything presented in an objective manner, and I don't feel like that's what hap- happened here. That's really all I have to say. I have nothing to present. I just wanna say, I really do expect the city to be objective when they look at any kind of presentation for proposals about how to solve a problem. You have two members of the community who wanted to offer solutions. One of them came with what seemed like to be the task that supported everyone in the room last week, and the other person who's not supported by a single person even before she uttered a word. So that's really it for me. Thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
I just have to comment on that. I wasn't here for the last meeting, and I'm completely open-minded. There's no conclusion that's been made other group, so if she wanted to present something, she should do it, so compare what she has to say.
So what I'm, thank you for that. What I'm saying is that la- at that meeting last Wednesday, that did not happen. At that meeting, it seems pretty clear that the committee was the choice, and the five oh C three was ludicrous. Like, everyone just thought it was ludicrous to the extent that Shuley was pretty much like shouted out, in my opinion. So I feel like she was totally disrespected in that meeting.
If if I'm right, the council has no no um oversight over the Chamber, so the meeting did, was, the purpose of the meeting was not to present two proposals to the city because we cannot we don't control that, so there wouldn't be no decisions. The meeting was to get the groups together to see if there was a path forward that the groups could work together.
That's confusing because then it was stated that it was already said that the Chamber would only pass this off to the city. So that means one proposal was selected, because the other proposal was a five oh one C three that had nothing to do with the city. So the proposal was shut down.
The the Chamber President, Robert Vincent, the board, whatever it is, the board chamber. What he said was, if the city does not take, does not form the committee and take on the salmon bake, they would either do something in cast or they would accept proposals from interested parties. So they're not saying, they're saying they, right now, they only wanna give it to the city, but if we say no, then they will open up to take other proposals. That was clearly said several times.
And so my question then becomes, I'm sorry, ma'am, my question then becomes, so the people who failed to deliver on the salmon bake are then deciding you can do it that all one year? That makes no sense to me.
It's the the chambers and the, if the council wishes, Melissa from the Chamber, the executive director, is online. She's having some moments getting here, so she gets online if you wanna speak to her, if you wanna hear from her.
Uh, I have just one more question. Um, I I believe I heard in the meeting that Robert Robert said that the Chamber actually does have a couple of other groups or
They did.
that are lined up that would step in and take one.
It did, they haven't decided which one to do, but they said there are people who have expressed an interest in taking the salmon bake, but they would, if the city doesn't want to take it, they would reach out to these final producer groups.
So then my only thing is that I would really appreciate it as a citizen, is that all, any person, every single last proposal we presented to the Chamber in the exact same way, everybody be given the same consistent way of presenting it and submitting it. That's all I'm really asking for, is some objective review of what is being presented and an objective like approval process as well, where one person isn't made to feel like, mm, what are you talking about? And the other person is like, yeah, that is what I feel like I saw. And I have no, I have no vested interest in this. I I'm just here as somebody who, well, I don't want things to get too political, and I want things to be fair inside of my city, inside of my town. That's all I really care about.
That's all we all care about. And if there's a proposal, it needs to go to the Chamber then.
Right, and so any proposal that's submitted then will be handled and approved the same way. Every, like, it won't be like, oh, one person is with the city and that's it. Anything's that, anything that is submitted will be handled and objectively reviewed in the exact same consistent way.
Right.
Okay, that's all I care about.
But that is only if the Chamber, or only if the city chooses not to form a committee and do salmon bake. Then it would be open to the Chamber figuring out how they wanted to put it out there and what criteria they want to use in order to select somebody for the salmon bake, do some running ultimately.
That's not okay. Why is the Chamber saying they're only gonna follow one route, and if we don't know that route, then
We're not the Chamber, we're not the Chamber.
You might understand that.
We're just not in control then.
But they're saying, what what I'm hearing Kim say, right? Is that the Chamber has said we'll hand it off to the city, and if the city doesn't want it, and there's other things that happen, then we'll handle it from there. Right? So it sounds like a foregone conclusion that it's being passed off to the city, and people who live here think that there's a potential other solution, all of them should drop to the table.
So maybe we should table this and have you bring that before council, your proposal.
I don't have a proposal.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor, we cannot no longer propose a, we are not the Chamber, right?
That's that's our, yeah, that's true.
We can only decide tonight if the council would like to form a committee, and in which case we have a letter of intent from the Chamber.
So you kind of see what I'm saying then. It's already been a foregone conclusion how to handle this.
I guess so.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure that everyone understood.
Thank you. Does anybody have her, any comments, or do you wanna, on your phone?
There's a call.
She lives, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I just wanted to thank Nicole for standing up because up until now, I've been the primary face of a group that I'm leading, and I'm not making decisions by myself, and I'm just I met her just only the other night at the meeting, and it was interesting to see different dynamics and groups and a councilperson that showed up and past relationships, um, anyway. It didn't seem like a meeting that was led by somebody who was unbiased and just there to direct the meeting. And I just know that if I am going to cook salmon, and I felt stopped at a little bit by lived experience, knowing what it's like to be on the fire line and to watch people physically get dehydrated and sick, preparing fish for people coming to our community. And it is a big deal, and it does seem like volunteers need to be able to have a place where they have a voice and that they get to help figure out where funds are shared from this this used to be the biggest fundraiser of our city. And it was hard to hear that last year's salmon bake brought in a little over their eleven hundred dollars. Anyway, thank you.
Uh, Melissa, did you have a comment?
I just, I'm here in case you guys have any questions, honestly.
Oh.
Sorry, I I couldn't be there physically, but you've read our letter. Our attorney can't write something unless there's a motion that's made, so unfortunately, I couldn't have a legal document for you. But I wanna say honestly, thank you for Wednesday. I thought it was pretty productive. I'm hopeful um, that it goes forward because I wanna partner with the city more and I want the salmon bake to happen. Did we say we'll make sure it happens? Absolutely, but I hope it's with support and partnership, and I think that it makes more sense that I'm the first to admit, I I've only been to one salmon bake, and that was last year's, and uh, there's a lot for me to learn for sure, so I just, I hope we can partner and make it happen.
Okay.
Is there any, oh, so I can't tell which other?
Was there any other comments, public comments?
Yes.
I just wanna make one thing clear. People keep saying that uh, this committee that's being proposed for the city, the Committee on Events and Promotions and Tourism is my idea. It is not my idea. I was approached by a group of people um, as a result of my comments at the city council meeting uh, back in July, and uh, as a result of a letter that I submitted to the following uh, city council meeting suggesting that the city at least uh, take it over temporarily to assure the security of all of the equipment and pieces that are used for the salmon bake until a time that it could be um uh, determined what was gonna happen next. So this is not my idea. I am supportive of this idea though, and I would love to work on it. But again, I just wanna make clear it's not my idea because um quite honestly, I'm starting to get the wrath of the community of people who think I'm out to claim something it is not mine to claim. I have no interest in that whatsoever. Thank you.
I think that council is all in agreement that um, my fervor with the salmon bake, it's not a fundraiser in the name of the Chamber. It would be just a city event for all residents here, would not be a money-making operation anymore. It would just be
Excuse me, I I don't remember that conversation. That was one of my questions.
It would not be a money-making operation anymore. It would not be besting in, best loads of folks and that type of thing, or it would be for us as residents to grant.
Well, you know, that raises an interesting point in there. If we're gonna be using this money, I mean, the whole point of this memo generated by city staff was we've been misspending the seventy thirty ratio. And if you're not gonna do this for tourism,
It is tourism.
Well, you just said it wasn't. It was gonna be for the community. We're getting, if you're getting rid of the buses, you're getting rid of the tourists. So how do we have, you know, how do we justify expenditure like that?
Exactly. Um, there is definitely a bunch of people in the city who would like to keep the salmon bake more community-focused, uh, because they've seen what that looks like with the um Lahaina, the um, fiftieth, and other things. However, uh, the part of the tourism promotions of the committee would say that we've gotta reach out to folks up and down the coast and bring in the tourists, which is the main purpose. So it would be a balance between dealing with the community and the history part of it, and we, there's a person who's interested in doing that part of it. Um, but also bringing people into the city, because we we need to do it. And that's important, and pardon me, counselor, I did not say we mismanaged. I've said we are not using all of our tourism dollars for tourism like we should be. They're sitting in the TRT.
Your Honor, uh, since it's the, really the job of the city, not to run events, but to, uh, not like society, partner, supporting. Uh, in in my mind, our job is to prime the pump, to make it so that uh, people of goodwill, uh, legitimate nonprofits, like the Chamber of Commerce, or whatever uh, nonprofit is legitimate that's out there, can put on this uh, event. You know, we have to remember that this was never meant to be a community event. This was, that's a byproduct of doing the salmon bake. The purpose of the salmon, the purpose of the salmon bake was to raise a budget so that the 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 Chamber of Commerce could operate a visitor center and otherwise have its funding set up for the year.
You haven't been here.
I've been here for thirty years.
Been here, that was that.
All right. Uh, so I, what I would like to do is, in the spirit of supporting this uh, this idea, I'd like to make a motion that the city would issue an RFP that would be open to uh, a nonprofit or a bonded individual to organize the twenty twenty four salmon bake.
We don't have it's not ours to do.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, pardon me, Melissa, pass your hand up.
Yeah.
Melissa. Oh, wait a minute.
Well, I'm sorry, why why is that not?
You're fine. I was just agreeing with the mayor. It's 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 not for the city to create an RFP. I mean, it's
it's currently the entity of the Chamber.
It's an N P R. So, so that's why we're here talking about doing a resolution tourism promotion and creating a committee that plan and help.
Well, if I can just say this, Mayor, uh, you know, if, and and I'm sure that we're gonna end up creating a committee. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that we will. I would, and my concern is that this is a a major distraction for this city council. Uh, as we're we're sitting here tonight facing, you know, some huge issues, and we have to have a little bit of wiggle. I'd like to know from Ms. Miles, or Shuley, or Melissa, what do they expect out of the city in terms of administrative support, staff support?
That's what the committee would be formed to do. The staff would not have anything to do with it. That's what the committee is formed for.
What if, what if the committee says, well, we need the staff to move those tables because we don't have that volunteer force?
All committees can do that. I think all people who rent the shelter or shelter, sorry, come to the community hall or rent the park can come in and ask.
Can be looked at and support.
Right.
So this, that's why the committee is uh, being drafted and promoted.
Yes.
Also.
So, um I also uh, think this is a big distraction for the city. And um, but I understand how important it is for the city um, to make sure there is a salmon bake. What I'm concerned about, there's a huge amount of energy right now, and you know how things start off for the first year or two, maybe three, there's a lot of volunteer energy, and then um that drops off. And um maybe that won't happen to the salmon bake, but this is not only confined to the salmon bake, it's It's, I feel a lot better if it's maybe confined to the salmon bake. But the other thing is um, if we're going to do this at all, um, I'd like to see it sunset unless it's um, revised. Within, I see that in the resolution, the terms are three years. I was going to say two, two years, but I think we go to three years. But then the committee would sunset unless authorized by, by the um, three authorized by the council. Um, again, I am, um, the idea of not knowing what resources, how much commitment from the city. You know, uh, I understand that the finances would be run for the city, but I would like to be a lot clearer about what it is that within this three-year trial period, um, what it is that um, is expected in the city. I think that's a legitimate um, concern. And um, and we already spend a lot of staff time. We're always putting up tables, Coast Guard's putting up this, but the city's involved a lot with putting up with things. So if that's going to continue, we should scout it out, that that's an okay expectation. But I'm really, like, this could get out of hand, especially if it's not just the salmon bake. You know, what else is going to be proposed? And the chamber is still there and they're still promoting. And I, I'm sorry, I also don't, one comment, I'll shut up. I also don't like the characterization that we're not spending our tourist dollars as they're intended to. Because I do believe um, you know, our city parks, our um, roads, our waters, our sewer, it's all part of what we, we spent TRT on. And it's all legitimate expenses because it does help the tourist economy, which is, has over a thousand tourists a day come to um, Depot Bay. And on average, over the course of the year, and warm sun. So, I don't know. So um, yeah, I'm, I'm not really fond of the way this resolution is going to change that.
Okay, is, is there a motion to?
What are we going to do, guys?
What do you want me to do?
We can always bring back another motion if there's some concern with how we certainly put a sunset provision in there. Do whatever the council, the majority of council wants.
You know, mayor, I would also like to see, I'm, I, I agree with uh, Council of Rec on that, that there shouldn't be a sunset clause in there. Boy, the more we talk about this, the, the, the deeper the hole I can see that we're digging on this. But if we're going to do it, and I got a feeling it's, it's going to happen, I would like to see the membership clause changed so that no member of the city council would be serving on this committee.
Absolutely not. That's not the purpose of it.
I think it's already stated in the, that it's no, seven volunteers from, from the.
None of whom are employees of the City of Depot Bay.
Right.
We are not employees of the City of Depot Bay.
Sorry.
I would like to see it in here that no members of the city council would be serving on this.
All right, we can amend that. And what's the reason for that?
To have, so that we can let, allow this committee to do its work and then we can oversee it. Uh, there's always this conflict of interest whenever you have a city councillor on a committee. I can point that out with the emergency preparedness committee right now. It's very difficult as a city councillor to do my job of oversight.
Yep.
When I have to have a conflict with people that are, the people I serve with are on that committee. I don't think we should have to be put in that position. It's a conflict of interest for a councillor who's required to be in oversight to be on the committee that they're overseeing. It, that's not the way it should be. And if this is going to be a citizen operation for the city, let, let the citizens step forward and do this. They're interested in it.
Pardon me, the council liaison was just simply someone there who can um, who could say um, bring things back to the council and bring things to the committee from the council, meaning saying, okay, well, this we've reassessed with council and the council is in support of this. So it's just, and, and a lot of cities have councillors, mayors do this for stuff. It's not needed, it's totally up to the council, but sometimes it's a good thing. And when you're talking about planning events, uh, sometimes it can be more helpful to have that kind of immediate mind, I guess.
Could I suggest we do bring it back and maybe as a, a quick work session? I have, I have gone back and forth and back and forth and I see the pluses and I see the minuses. I have a problem loading the committee with any description of anything here, whether it be a councillor, chamber, whatever, just needs to be general, like I'm here, the commission is. So I just, I have so many problems with the way it is right now that I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
And I have some alternate ideas that I might have too.
Okay.
Please.
So do we all concur to he?
Table. Table, listen. Okay.
Uh, we've got a waiver letter from the Lincoln County Fair Board asking for your approval, please. Is that what I've read?
And pardon me, mayor, he's, Daniel's here.
Aye.
At least he was, there he is. He is here if you have a question, so if he wants to.
Okay, Daniel.
Good evening. Good evening, madam, uh, counsel. I am Daniel Helfrich. I'm the current sitting uh, chair for the Lincoln County Fair Board and Rodeo. And we have a subcommittee that we're putting together for sponsorship and marketing because that's one of the biggest uh, problem childs we have with the, with the fair. And Depot Bay happens to be centrally located for the individuals that are being asked to be on the committee. And so the community uh, hall would be the perfect place to have the meeting. The problem and the reason for the waiver request is that currently the fair board doesn't, we run on a, a zero budget. So we don't get any money, but what we raise every year. So the Lincoln County Fair currently runs on just strictly funds that are raised each year. And so trying to, you know, spend twenty-eight dollars seems minimal every month, but that adds up when you don't have any money. So it is the request that if we could waive that uh, twenty-eight dollars, uh, that would be optimal. And then we can also, as the fair board, identify that the City of Depot Bay is helping sponsor the fair and rodeo for Lincoln County.
Your hon, your honor, I'd like to make a motion that the uh, city uh, waive the uh, the fee of twenty-eight seventy-five for the Lincoln County Fair Board meetings.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second to waive the fee of twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents to reading. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're good to go, Daniel.
No, of course I'm.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Um, Jack, are you still here, Jack?
I am. It's been a long time since I sat in on this.
Okay, so you are applying to serve on um, our Harper Commission?
That is correct.
Did a nice letter. Any questions for Jack on this?
I do have a question.
No, I'm, I'm fairly, oh, I'm sorry.
Jack, this is Counselor Beasley, and, and thank you. I read your uh, your letter. Uh, it's very, very interesting, but I just have one question. Uh, you mentioned that Fred Robinson became, eventually became mayor and owned a local grocery store. Now, I may be ignorant about this, I may not know Fred's entire history, but I think he might be referring to Bob Jackson.
Correct.
I, I, you know, maybe, yeah, don't quote me. I, I am fifty-six and getting old, I feel. I actually barbecued salmon tonight for a lady's birthday, so it's ironic talking about the salmon bake. But uh, I remember Fred owning, uh, it's right next to the Mazatlan, a little grocery store. Maybe he managed it, uh, I was pretty young then.
No.
I, I remember the Jimco docks, I worked there when I was twelve one summer. He really liked me, he was a super guy. And uh, I, he, he saw me as an incompetent deckhand, so he let me help him on occasion. And I had some great pictures I gave to his son Lars years later. Um, but that's how I remember Fred. He was kind of a jack-of-all-trades, uh, as, as I'd put it.
Okay, so um, you're not a resident of Depot Bay though?
I'm a fifty percent resident of Depot Bay, that's correct. I uh, my uh, my dad purchased a place in nineteen seventy, I believe, or seventy-three. And my uncle Ron purchased a place who Brady bought, uh, who's, he's now ninety-three, so they're all getting up in age. My dad had passed. And I purchased a place from my dad. So I've been there most summers and about fifty percent of the time, actually anytime I get loose from my other adventures, I'm over there. And uh, so, but I'm not a full-time resident, that's correct.
I have a question.
Yes.
So would you be able to attend the monthly meetings?
Would be my goal. I still uh, I still do training. Um, I am off, well, I just got back from Reno and I'm off to Maui. That's kind of a bus, but I will still go there and, since I already got my plane tickets and enjoy what's left and uh, in November. But yeah, absolutely, it's my goal that if I can still do it rurally at times or via Zoom, which I did tonight, and at times in person. I'm an avid fisherman, I'm just not very good at it, but I, I've been fishing out of that port since nineteen seventy, since I was about three. And my dad and World War II buddies in the fifties. So it's uh, been a long time going in and out of that bay.
Question for the recorder. Recorder, would we be able to accommodate uh, Jack with Zoom at these meetings? Okay, but I would like to make a motion that we accept the application, just Jack's. There you go, sorry, Jack, I'm trying to rush you right in, but.
Oh, that's okay, I appreciate, that's all good.
I have another question. Yes, I understand there is no opening right now in Harper Commission, it's not.
There, there wasn't, but there is now, Counselor um, Mike. We declared it at our last week. And that, the reason that's there just in case something happens.
Okay, thank you.
That's why.
Okay, do you have a ballot? Pardon my language.
There's twenty ballots. We're stepping the ballot.
Can I, just as clarification, if it is allowed to have one person that lives out of, to, to, out of the district on the table?
Yes.
A one or two?
One, I think for your herd. But maybe two, let me look.
It's different.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, each one's different. That's all right, I'll look, I just want to make sure that it works.
I'll look at it.
Five yes, two no.
Okay, ballots up and accepted, is there a motion to accept the um, five yes and two no?
I'll make that motion.
Ballots, is there a second?
I second that.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
So, I'm, I'm gonna add to the, uh, name of month. The thirty-first, right.
Halloween.
A week. Halloween, no, it's the twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, Wednesday. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth at three-thirty, your honor, at ten.
Your honor, we've been at this for a couple of hours, can I request a time to break?
Sure, absolutely. Thank goodness, thank you, thank you. We're here for the post. Thank you, dear. Uh, proposed changes to the planning committee. All of the discussion on that, has everybody had a chance to read all of this? Okay. Any questions?
Do you have any questions about what the legislature?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, makes sense.
What do we need to do to approve it?
You can just direct that the cap, head of commissions, the head of mission, the staff move forward and, because we, we all have to present some moves to you.
Right, well, and we need to change the ordinance?
That's, that's what was.
So, right, okay.
That was, we used to have this, we need to have a change to the ordinance.
Yeah.
And we'd like all of this, obviously, to occur before the end of the year. Uh, and just so you know, the two people who are going off the commission are willing to consider applying as alternatives. So there will be experienced applicants that are available. But I think it's really important for the work of the commission to continue. Because if somebody gets sick or goes on vacation or an emergency arises, um, they're not going to be able to eat.
Right.
Uh, even if the commission is re-justified.
I think that really makes sense, thank you. And thank you for stepping up and suggesting that, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
We'll work on all the changes and get it back before council.
So we need a motion of support on the previous idea?
I would say that unless there is um, somebody who's not a favor in this, that, that council concurrence will be before, because you will be ultimately approving the changes, so if they come forward.
Well, it really makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the tri-county continuum of care, we had um, a few remember picking up wires here. And she's got a resolution before, and this is really um, tying in with uh, making a more cohesive group that will have more, greater power for um, state funds as they become available. So um, has everyone had a chance to read Resolution five-five-zero-two-three? A resolution in support of establishing a continuum of care for the Lynn, Binton, and Lincoln Counties region and registered with United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in two thousand and twenty-four.
Your honor, this is a motion to adopt Resolution number five-five-zero-bash-two-three, since you already read it. I won't, uh, go any further.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second to adopt Resolution five-five-zero-two-three. Is there any discussion on the motion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All ready?
Thank you, and thank you, because she's doing an amazing job. And I think, I think you're going to see some real differences in, in funding as we go forward.
Okay, so let's open a discussion on the, our community hall. We've had some really bad uh, noise complaints coming out. And so Kim and I, I thought it would be a good time for a discussion on how we want to move forward in um, this debate here.
Your honor, may I open the session?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And uh, just out of disclosure, full disclosure here, I'm the guy that complained about this, I live right across the street from him. But I have read this package and I just want to say that I apologize if I, if, if I gave you the impression I wanted a noise ordinance, which I don't. What I would like to see is the city enforce its own existing rules. That's all. And I feel that the way to enforce rules, that would be the easiest way to do it, would be to expand the deposit language. So that if you violate the rules, which say no, no uh, music after ten P M., that you would lose your deposit. I think that kind of would enforce some self policing down there. You have the notion that we need to do a noise ordinance, buy a noise gun, and send somebody to noise school to learn how to operate it so we don't get into a lawsuit, is, 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 is over the top.
This ordinance is more than a chance.
Oh, okay, well.
The gun, however.
No, I have, I have, I have a decibel meter. So I do, and I don't want to, I can go to school.
It's not the, it's not the noise that's the problem. It's the part, the problem is just that they just don't stop at the.
About thirty the other night, and then they came back and went on to two.
Was that a connection?
Oh, it's been several nights over the past couple of weeks.
Considered a huge party that I did earlier. It was nine-thirty, it wasn't ten o'clock, but it was very. It was nine-thirty, it wasn't ten o'clock, it was very happened, yeah.
So if we just changed that one part and, and expanded the, the deposit to include the rules violations, I think that might solve the problem.
I'm sure you see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somehow.
I, you know, I got notes all over this, but I must admit that, so.
Right, so I like what Millsford and Yount placed it, they have the noise permit thing. Was there a fee that went with that?
No, they, Millsford chose not to, with the, the Depo Bay certainly could. The problem with, so if, if you, if I may, the noise ordinance is fine, I mean, it does need some tweaking in order to our city attorney. However, the enforcement is simply calling the non-emergency L C S O number, because there has to be verifiable, we can't just take a complaint at noise at one o'clock in the morning, and the next day they take a complaint, and we can't do anything with it, because it has to either, the person either has to actually go with L C S O and swear out a complaint to actually put it on record, or city staff have to verify that's actually an argument thing. So that's the problem, it isn't that there isn't enforcement, it's, there is an enforcement because nobody works at night.
So even, you know, we all have phones with videos and stuff, right, even if timestamp video won't be, if it's ten, you know, nobody's gonna be able to reason if it's ten-thirty or whatever.
I don't think we have those kind of cameras down there, do we?
No, no.
No, no, on a cell phone, I can't, I don't see a lot of cell phone.
I, I don't know, I, I honestly don't know that'd be something we have to activate, but there's some consideration, which is why I kind of, you know, I ratify them, and, and, you know, I think I put in the hours city attorney said, yeah, we can do a noise, we can charge a noise deposit, but it's proven and verifying that and making sure that. Now, if you want me to explore this more, I can ask them about using video, when there's ways, you know, people use Ring cameras for stuff all the time. If somebody takes something that they can't do that, I just don't know the answer to that question. You know, in this modern world, who knows?
So staff never addresses it when they pick up their applications, that might be a place to start, by the way.
That, they don't, they haven't, as a rule, reviewed the rules with, they haven't reviewed them, but there's a couple of ways, one is to make sure that the rule is reviewed, that's what a permit does, a noise permit is a system. I know it needs extra work that way, but it puts everything out there, and it can get, now it's a person to have a conversation with them and say, this is what happens. Maybe that's the appropriate place for you to say, okay, well, your violation is, here's a deposit, you can violate it, you know, and here's how you violate it, and, you know.
But even started, it says currently it has a form indication, no music between the hours of ten P M. and seven A M.
Exactly.
So even going over meanwhile or working on, and you.
Yeah. Yeah, and she's doing that, they're doing that now, they're, that, she told me that she, reading it to them, highlighting it to them, you know.
Okay, and then we're gonna put.
We are putting signs up, the mayor suggested putting some reminder signs down there that, you know, hours, no noise between such and such.
I have a question, when they, when they get the permit, do they sign the permit that they have read it and understood it?
You, you mean the, the music, or you mean with now?
Well, not the form.
With the form now, yeah, they do, but.
Okay, let me just ask this, why can't you just change that to say that if you violate a rule, like the music rule, you lose your deposit?
Because first of all, we don't have a deposit, secondly, we have to be able to verify it. When we say we're gonna keep the deposit for cleaning, Brady's team can go down there and say, no, that's not clean, there's glitter everywhere, whatever, that's verifiable.
Fran had the solution there, which is a timestamped video.
If that, what, if that would be something our attorney said we were now to do, I, I, that's a good question, I think that's a great question, and I don't have the answer to it, it's all about that.
And why do you say that we don't, they don't have a deposit, because I see here that's plus a deposit, you can't do a deposit.
It's just with the cleaning.
Yeah, but I mean, and that's what I'm saying, if you change this to include the rules violation.
And, and I would love to do that if our attorney says we can take the timestamp.
I think we need a vote, though, I think people who may violate the noise may also rather the cleaning.
Yeah.
We, so we.
The answer, sure.
If we've violated noise violation, did they have a messy place, did we keep their deposit?
Well, it's happened, oh, yeah, some of these really, really.
Uh, pardon, I'm asking if these ones, and did we keep their deposit, because I hadn't heard that.
We have kept deposit in the past for all scenarios, like for leaving M S.
Right.
They were very valid, car involved, apartment on a different, every, scenarios were different, floor was tall, and everything.
Right, so we, in this recent case, we didn't keep the deposit because no report was there.
Yeah, they, they.
They were fine.
They cleaned.
So to say that somebody who violates the noise violates, will have a messy place, it's not really, it's not, it's not fair to it.
But will you look into it?
We can look into it, the line will check on it and report back at the next meeting, and then the council can decide what they would like to do after that.
And I'd like to see the rates raised.
I would like to see those rates raised as well, under the research, um, time committee on.
And this thing with the address, whoa.
Yeah, we should check, we should ask the attorney.
But it's so.
They, they thought there was something, um, Carter thought there was something that said that we verify addresses, but there's not, so there's something else. So, the way the past city that we're for did was they essentially said, city can, can verify by giving your driver's license, so you can verify that, so it's not saying that each time you do, but the city can. But now, technically, we're gonna ask the question, but it's just, we'll see, we, we'll see if it's expanded in time.
It's really bad, if, if it sound like somebody's been bird, um, just those little kids screaming, and the music's one thing, but then there's the cars and the.
And another thing I would like to bring is, right now, and I don't understand this, right now, the community hall hours are like twenty-four-seven, and, no, we should not. We should say, you know, at your ten or eleven, that's it, we're done.
Yeah.
Eleven.
We put the eleven on.
One of the things says eleven and one says ten, so I got that.
Other, other venues are not available.
No.
So we're being a little down to one of the only areas that can, we consider a new park. We used to have them up at the mall, um, across from State.
Okay, so I will investigate, and consult rec suggestion, and bring back and let you know what our city attorney says about our ability to do that.
My husband says thank you. It's disgusting what they do.
Okay, um, we have city, city staff reports, project updates, any questions on everything that's going on in town?
Just wanna make sure that everybody knows. I know.
I'll take this, Mayor, if you're looking for something, it, it has to be on the financial end of the report. And the auditor did not finish, he syndicated at the end of September that we have paid forty thousand dollars with Millington site for this audit. You know, this is a scandal, and it's, and we just need to do something different. And this visit by Tim Johnson was an eye-opener. When he said that the county was, actually had the same auditor, and that they're having the same problem. And then I looked at the Secretary of State's site, and it's surprising the number of cities and districts that are in the same boat as we are. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't ask him to help us, or to, maybe he could take charge of something like this, to hold a conference or contact with other cities in the county that are, that are facing this problem, as well as the county, and, and there are several, there's a fire district in the county that doesn't have an audit. There's, there are school districts. And talk about approaching this from a standpoint of hiring our own auditor, or some other idea that, that can be implemented, so that we can get our financials in order. We have good reason to put our financials in order, of course, and that.
Of course we do. Yes. So I was in Eugene, beginning yesterday, for the Oregon Financial Officers Association Conference. So all things money were discussed, I sat in on the session that was municipal audit updates, with the sole purpose of talking and expressing my frustrations with Amy Jam, who was a municipal audit manager. She was not there. So the gentleman who were in. Yeah, so the gentleman who was there was another auditor with another, a C P A with another firm. So I expressed my frustrations with him and the thirty, forty people in the room. And essentially what I was told is that the state can't, and we're busy going to do anything, that they recognize it's a problem, that there is not that many auditors out there, and then, I meant to give you guys how much interest it, but they did provide a report of, his part was to say, what was the, and this is how, you can't do this, because we don't have as many people. But he did give me one option, and I'm gonna call him about it more, he said that we can hire another auditor, because everybody agreed, everybody was like, well, can you sanction them, what can you do? But there's nothing we can do, because we have to go to court, we want to sanction him, we, they, we still don't have our audit, we can get a new audit, throw the four-six thousand away. So what he said we could do, and I didn't push it, because it was a big group of people, and I didn't want to dominate it. And said something about being able to hire an auditor to start on our next one, that they would have, like, if, like it was a brand new audit, like we didn't have an audit before. They would have to verify the balances, the starting balances, but it would weren't like we never had been in audit before. So the nineteen-twenty would still be sitting out there and still be a problem. So, and there's no, there's no impacts to the auditors not doing what they're supposed to be doing. State has no hammer over there, nobody has any hammer over there, as long as they're not violating any of the auditor standards. And they're not doing that. There's definitely a lot of other cities in this place, and they're all going through the same thing. He said we could go out for an R F D. and then just have to start it, it's a brand new one. So I wanna get some more information from him before I ask us to go down that route, because I just want to make sure I understand what he's saying.
Did everybody have the same firm?
Oh, no.
So there was, there's more than one?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Yes. No. The, the LA, the O C C. and the Oregon, Oregon City County managers, and the L M R. that are in this report is the two groups I belong to, they discuss this all the time. There are a lot of cities who not having problems, but their audits will leave me, I've written the auditor firms down. But there are some cities, some have spoken them, but it's interesting, because there's, there are some cities out there with problems, but there's less in my level two, I, we, because we don't have to score districts, and we don't have anything like that. Walper just got theirs done. I don't know how they got theirs done, but.
Well, shouldn't we talk to, to Dan?
I will ask Dan, and he'll probably just say that lucky, but I'll ask Dan.
And the, did you mention the school board, have they had the same problem?
Oh, no. No, we, we use a completely different firm. Yeah, I was Seattle.
Well, we've got lots of firms lined up, it's just a matter of.
Yeah.
Believe me.
We're managing, so yeah, I think, I think that's.
I'm sure. At the next meeting, I'll provide an update after I speak with that gentleman, and I'll ask you for a recommendation. I think it will debut before we go ahead and do R F D. We can treat the twenty-twenty-one as if it's a brand, yeah, a lot of that. I'm just not sure what, when he said you have to check the balance, I'm not sure what that means. Because usually they check the end, they hold the end of balances, the beginning of. I don't want to bore you with all the details, I'm sorry, I'm prepared to say. I really wanted to speak to her, I'm very disappointed that I didn't get to, and it wasn't being reported, even.
So what do you need from us to help, can you?
Nothing right now, counselor, thank you, I appreciate your concern, I think what I'm gonna do is reach out to that, grab that gentleman that I spoke to at the firm, and say, what did you exactly mean? And then I will, I will call Dan and see what he does, and that did, and, because he has the same auditor we do. And I'll report the next meeting, and we'll let you know, ask for a recommendation, whatever that might look like.
Lindsay, did you have a question?
Um, I had two things actually on the staff report. Um, one, I just wanted to highlight that we will now be a level three wastewater treatment plant, which is a big deal. I think we should have that on an agenda, just as a discussion item, to understand all of the implications of that.
Okay.
Um, in addition, I was just wondering about the door that's gonna replace the restroom door at the harbor, if we could get one of those locks that has the automatic lock key.
Alright.
Yeah, so they are on, down here, at the harbor, so those are currently auto locks? Uh, yeah, they, they, they're on a timer with a magnet.
Okay.
Um, that's how the door got vandalized, is it was locked and somebody literally tried to pry it open. Um, so.
That was a new door.
We, we have to order two doors, one for the fish cleaning station side, and then the right side door of the two restrooms. So currently it's locked, because if you open it, it'll just fall apart, so.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, we.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So the thing about the security cameras and stuff, is that in your report, is that the security cameras at the harbor that were made before?
Uh, you know, we put security cameras at the wastewater treatment plant, and it's, there currently are security cameras in the harbor.
I've been helping yesterday.
They're not pointing, there, there's certain state laws about pointing them at a restroom directly, but we could have them off to the side.
And a sign saying under surveillance.
Yeah.
And also with the launch ramp, I thought we were gonna put a security cam out there.
Yeah, there's no, um, there's no electricity available there, to, to power in this, and then to get a wireless signal. So, but the Coast Guard is, is battery operated with a solar panel. But we could work on trying to get something closer, or a zoom type of camera that can zoom in from the wastewater pump station off the roof there, we're working on that, with the, with the Western States in their camera.
I would have one other thing on the parks, I, uh, the North Bridge replacement, that other bridge is gonna have to be replaced too, the middle bridge. So can we just work on both of those at the same time?
Well, I know that the bridge to the second bridge is, is, is in the budget, so we'll probably, you know, more, I think it'll be, yeah, maybe, you know, maybe, maybe not.
I could clarify, when the engineer did it, the quote, he looked at both bridges for us, and he's given us a quote for both bridges. But we decided this year during the budget cycle to focus on the one that is actually not used right now. The next one, the south bridge, whatever you want, bridge to whatever, the small bridge, we'll put in the budget for next year. It's already been back again, he's just finishing up the final drawings, so we like the bid for the north bridge.
Your honor, I've noticed down in the park, we're having a lot of new pressures that I don't think we've ever seen, that I think we should address, one is, for example, the dog poop that's going on down there is, is really excessive, I think it's kind of dangerous, and Lincoln City addressed this through an ordinance. I've seen recently groups of people moving through the park to collect mushrooms. And so we're seeing pressures that we haven't seen before, and the park is really fraying at the edges. And I'm hoping that we can get the Parks Commission maybe to, to look into this stuff and make some recommendations on like a, a bag law, up in Lincoln City, you can get a very hefty fine for not turning a bag on the sidewalk. And to look at that whole park, maybe some key people on the trails, have a, a, a sign that says do not leave the trail. I don't know.
Uh, the Parks Commission, in order for them to do anything, they need some kind of direction from the council. So if there's things you want them to work on as a council, then that would be something you would convey to me, and I would convey that to them, but right now, they don't know anything that's right down there, so they would need to know specifically what the issues are. And then I'd be happy to pass along to them, or meet them next Wednesday.
Well, I'd like to see them work on a, on a dog poop ordinance.
Yeah, dog foul ordinance we have.
Who will enforce it? Who will enforce it?
So the question.
Well, we just appointed a bunch of enforcement officers at the last meeting, did we not?
Correct.
But we have to be honest about to see it.
Do dog poop enforcement?
I don't know, it's hard to see it.
I mean, what we said several meetings ago that we're gonna put a sign down there that goes, leave with us, under surveillance, and there's a fine for dog or.
There is one a sign under surveillance of, people better.
There are.
We should put that sign down here.
Yeah, but it's.
If you want.
Yeah, there, there is signs that say, please clean up after your pet, with patrol or something like that, but yeah.
Oh, yes.
There is a maybe that show the, the dog foul, um, ordinance violation, which should be posted. So be like a custom sign, we could put the ordinance number and make some of those and, you know, apply those in some of our parks. And it's, a lot of folks use the uh, front of parks too, the oceanfront parks that they're forced to pull over, like the dog pit and, you know, so there's quite a bit of dog pieces.
Well, most of the ordinance we see, what we can do.
But yeah, maybe, maybe if we can uh, get that ordinance, like we did with the garbage, we had like a home garbage issues. So we put on the garbage cans, the, the ordinance number and the fine, and it really helped, so maybe, maybe do.
Signage sounds like a good plan, just.
Okay. Moving on, closing public comments, any closing speaking?
I, I have a quick comment that I, this, pardon. I just want to um, know if, if the road that goes down the bay, I can't remember what the name is, Shell here.
Right.
Shell. So I, you know, we see all that clearing going on down there, which breaks my heart, but is there still gonna be a sidewalk that goes down a little bit?
Yes. There will be, okay. Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, required to.
Yeah, so. Our city engineer is working with her because there's some issues about property lines and dedications.
Our city engineer, that is, I'm gonna make sure that's still in the ordinance.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other closing comments? Um, council comments, who wants to council comment? Don't everybody jump up here.
We're, I don't have any.
Okay.
Um, the plants about the trees again, the trawerness, driving down to the park the other day, you know, shocking and devastating. I thought we were gonna have to get something on the books that people couldn't just go clearing entire lots, you have to keep some trees up and yeah, I was just shocked to see that a lot completely cleared. So I want to get something on the books about a tree ordinance.
Isn't that very kind of the commission, what they.
And that borrowed up, so, you know, I think it seems to be, it should be worked in the.
We remember one of the meetings that we had, I don't know if Council Watson was there, that we discussed that there's some changes coming down to that and put some could possibly put some restrictions on, so anything we could put into place right now could be overturned. I suggested we could put something in place right now. Um, I'm trying to remember what the direction was. I think it was to hold off on this because I think in doing a little bit of.
I, I thought you said you were working on drafting a tree ordinance.
I did have one. I sure do. And I think part of the consideration was, um, and I resent the draft, right?
Yeah.
Let me look back at the notes and make sure that Council Watson, I'll let you know what we came in on that, so, because I don't think he remembered when that was discussed. And then I will refresh my memory about what we wrapped.
Let me do it, how?
Any other for council comments? I bet my, uh, witches are plodding around.
I'll just, I'll take a stab at a council comment. Just follow up on what uh, uh, Council Watson said. I'm actually for uh, a tough tree ordinance. Uh, because it would impede development and that is our big, that's the biggest thing facing Depot Bay right now. Uh, it's, it's impolite to say that we don't want more development, but since we don't have the luxury of a property tax, there's no way we can keep up with what's coming in. So, but, but be careful, when you want a, you want a tree ordinance, a tough tree ordinance, that's gonna go, that goes against the formal house.
Yep.
So you can't have both. So you're entitled to look.
Can I get your comment?
Yes.
I just really wanted to thank staff for working on the Cook Street. Um, and I can only imagine what you have all been through just based on what we saw tonight. I, I apologize that as a public servant, that you're having to be treated like that. And I have some concerns about your personal safety. Um.
We don't go down there and talk to her anymore. We send cases. Every day. In your opinion?
Okay.
I am, thank you all, kind of particularly, we're out of yours. You're such even handed. We're so much for you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
And you're gonna love it then.